I hope it was available when you got there.
Yeah, I just have.
Travis Sims parked there.
Really?
And I busted it. And I decided, instead of getting in direct trouble with him, I told Owen, and Owen did dirty work.
Oh, that was no...
I know, it was, wasn't it? Well, I knew poor Stephen, he's here until this hour.
People park it all the time, I just park up above it.
But now there's also a string concert. There's no real parking.
Oh, is that right? Okay, if you find that. Really?
I was gonna work it.
Oh, my gosh. Do some, like, strings, all strings or...
We need to adjourn. Right.
Yeah.
She was there with one of them.
Yeah. Works for us. He's a chef. Guy charred him.
Hey, Kristen? We need you up here. Ralph and Brenda, could you come up also? We're gonna get the committee around here. You could take, like, the end seats, that would be good. You had, like, two there and two there.
That's Tom Livingston here, so Brian and Ralph, I went over there.
No.
Great. Kristen, is it Casemira?
It's the one we use.
Diane Dolph's taken some of it there?
Yeah, we have to get that.
Don't worry, I'm used to it.
I don't know where I got Casemira.
I'm sure someone has dropped into a hole.
No, no, they can be right.
It was not.
Kristen is here for Tom tonight.
Right.
So I'm just in transition.
Alan's here.
Tom, Brenda, Tom, I mean, I can back out.
So I think my point here is that... Okay, I can't say that. Kristen, were you going to address number four, or do you want me to do that?
Okay, thank you.
And then Brenda's gonna do that, correct?
Yep. Okay, Ralph. Okay, is that my problem? Five. Okay, we're having this, these are discussions.
I think that was what we were gonna do. Talk to us more than half a day.
Yeah, thank you. You should probably just tell them, say it's gonna happen.
How are you?
Good.
How are you, Brenda?
Stephen, good, how are you? Tom? Good, how are you?
Good. It's been good, I have more. Always from Brooklyn Hill. No parking. Nice.
That's what I...
Yeah. Horrible.
Yeah, hold on, I'm trying to...
This is preschool kids' information, this is kids in the housing authority minutes. Okay? And I think it's some vows not gonna be here, so I'm gonna... And I think it's some vows not gonna be here, so I'm gonna... And I think it's some vows not gonna be here, so I'm gonna... And I think it's some vows not gonna be here, so I'm gonna... How are you?
Good. Hey.
How are you? How are you, sir?
I'm great, how are you?
Good. How are you, Brenda?
Stephen, good, how are you? Tom? Good, how are you?
Good. It's been good, I have more. Always from Brooklyn Hill. No parking. How nice.
That's what I... Yeah. Yeah, hold on, I'm trying to...
This is preschool kids' information, this is kids in the housing authority minutes. Do people could talk to you quickly? Okay? And I think it's some vows not gonna be here, so I'm gonna... And I think it's some vows not gonna be here, so I'm gonna... How are you? How are you?
Good. Hi.
Where are the kids who are going down to three projects? And these are kids preschool.
Okay.
And where they live relative to getting them.
Can you send that with me?
Way over there, way over there. Yeah. Is that handouts?
Yeah, there's pieces if people want to...
He's got some right channels.
Okay, I think everyone is here, we'll start this meeting. At 7:37, we'll call the November 10th meeting of the Facilities Committee at the Board of Education to Order. I'd like to introduce the members of the committee, Brian Meek and Artie Kessimas and myself. Eval Krevker is unfortunately teaching tonight and unable to attend. Our superintendent, Stephen Adamowski, and central office team members Brenda Williams, Kristen Karshman, and Ralph Alancizzi. We have Bill Hodel from Facilities, Fortevad, as well as Alan Lowe, Facilities City of Norwalk, and Tom Livingston, who is a member of the Common Council and chair of the Man Juice Committee of the Common Council. So, there, I did hand out minutes, there are some copies of minutes on the table there for anyone who wants to see from our last meeting on October 18th. And, I don't know, if you want to take a quick look at them, if anyone has any corrections, I do have a couple of corrections. On the first page, at the third from the bottom paragraph, it says, the superintendent was saying, "An absence of a neighborhood school in many parts of the city of Norwalk", I think it's in South Norwalk part of the city of Norwalk. And on the last line on page one, it says, "Typography, it should be topography." And at the end, it says, "So it's further noted this committee would have regular monthly meetings on the first Thursday of the month, commencing in November", obviously this isn't the first Thursday of the month, but the last, I think, I think I would just say we'll have regular meetings going forward. And unless anyone else has any adjustment to the minutes, could, I have a motion. Proposed by Brian, seconded by Artie, on a vote, unanimously approved the minutes for October 18th. We will now proceed to the next topic, is presentation of the survey results on the South Norwalk School. And I think Brenda Williams, who's been intimately involved in running the survey, has some interesting information for us.
Thank you. What we want to do tonight is give some preliminary information about what we have so far in terms of the information we've been collecting from the survey that we launched on October 26th. This was passed out in hard copies at the meeting in South Norwalk, we had about 100 English copies and about 100 Spanish copies with us. It has also gone out online to both our parents as well as on our website. So we have put it out in a variety of different ways to try to get as much feedback as possible for the committee and the board to be able to use as one of their points of input when making the decision about the facilities study and what comes next. So, this is not necessarily a survey that you would call a scientific survey, but what it is, is it's a point of feedback for people. One of the things that we're committed to doing is to making sure that people have opportunities to give us information and two-way feedback as part of our next steps in communications, and so this is one of the pieces that we're starting to put together to open the opportunities for people to give us more information. So, we will have more complete results on this in one of the December Facility Committee meetings, but what we wanted to do tonight is just give you a little bit of an update on what we have received so far, so that you know where we stand with this. So the first slide in here will show you a little bit about the people that we have been hearing from. Now, this is just online at this point, and as you see, we have about 450 online surveys in from NPS Parents of Guardians, about 42 in from what we call future parents of guardians, those pre-K parents and below, people who have kids who will be in the system for years to come, and then about 10 at this point from people who identified as community members without students currently in the system. And this includes both English language and Spanish language online surveys that we've received so far. What it does not include is any of the hard copies, we have yet to be able to incorporate that into the system. We have about 70 hard copies that we have received, and what we'll be doing in the coming days is incorporating that feedback in with the online information as well. The next slide, we asked people whether or not they were a resident of South Norwalk, just so that we would be able to disaggregate the data and be able to isolate out what the answers were from the folks who are actually living in the neighborhood. And right now, we have about 25% of the respondents to this are from the South Norwalk area, and a variety of people weighing in from the rest of the city as well. We also wanted to be able to identify the responses that were coming in from parents of the unassigned students, those who would be part of what we used to call the District 99 students. And in the actual survey itself, we did identify those addresses, so that if people weren't familiar with the term, they would know what areas we were talking about. And out of the 475 or so responses that we've received so far online, about 30 of those are from folks who identify themselves as being from the unassigned areas. The next slide, we were asking whether or not people were in favor of building a new school in South Norwalk on the Nathaniel Ely campus, and making the point that the existing tennis courts and pre-K programs could be maintained as part of that question. And right now, we've got about 89% of those folks are saying, yes, they would be in favor of that, and 11%, 52 answers being not in favor of that. And again, that's just from the general community, we have not divided it out yet between South Norwalk and other areas. That will be one of our next steps. The next slide talks a little bit about whether or not people are in favor of a K through five school at that location, if one was to be built there, a K through eight school, or if they weren't interested in either of those. And right now, 62% of the respondents were in favor of a K through eight school, and 31% were in favor of a K through five school. And then we have a few next steps here that will be coming up to bring you the final results on this as we finish this off. We'd like to close the questionnaire by November 23rd, prior to the Thanksgiving break. That'll give us time to incorporate all the hard copies and to be able to separate out some of the data so that we can dive a little bit more deeply into some of the answers, and that way we'll have it for your December Facilities Committee meeting. We need to incorporate the hard copy responses into the data, that means we manually input it in with the rest of the online responses. We need to analyze the input from different constituencies, whether it's just a South Norwalk resident, pre-K parents, to find out what they're thinking. We need to review the open-end answers for common themes. Right now, we've got about 100 open-end answers that appear to have come in, so we'll go through those and identify some of the common areas that people have input in or have concerns about, so that we can report back to the committee. And then, the final report at the December Facilities Committee meeting, we'll be looking back at the online ones as well as probably additional hard copy ones that might be out there.
That's terrific, thank you, Brenda. Do any committee members have any questions?
Are we gonna get the breakdown? You gonna forward us the breakdown of who said no, who said yes?
Yes, that's what we're gonna, we're gonna work on next, is pulling all of that.
When? At the next meeting?
We'll do, we'll have that ready for the next meeting.
So our next meeting, I think at this point, we're gonna have on November 29th. So I don't know if that gives you enough time to aggregate all that, but at least you can give us an update.
Sure, absolutely. If we can close it a little bit earlier than if we're gonna do it at November 29th.
I guess, you know, see if, maybe we make one last push publicly to say, you know, please submit, and then...
Sure.
You know, maybe do that this week, make one more plea, and see if our response, our response picks up at all.
Okay.
And then, you know, maybe close it on that Monday or something like that.
Right, and they'll give us about a week or so to sort of finish it up and keep the...
So, just in terms of the work ahead, my understanding is you've got 72 hard copy responses from the preschool parents.
Correct.
In the Odyssey preschool program. Okay, those have to be integrated into the results, but to Mr. Kessimas' point, then we want to take all the results and disaggregate it. Parents, South Norwalk residents, non-South Norwalk residents, see if there's any differences in responses and so on, and that would be the next report. Okay? Address, you're asking?
Yeah, how many kids or families do we have that in South Norwalk are being bussed out?
I don't know about families, we have 1,375 kids.
Okay, so we only got...
They're 13, let me rephrase, there are 1,375 kids between the ages of preschool through eighth grade in South Norwalk that are south of the, the South Department of the Chamber of Commerce.
So we only have 114 responses from about 1,300 kids?
Well, I mean, that's, those are, those are kids, I mean, they're obviously multi-family.
Correct, it could be multi-family, of course.
Maybe there's 600 families, I can ask our demographer if they have the data broken down that way.
I'm just curious how we can get a better handle, you know, a bigger population.
Well, remember too, this does not include the hard copy, so...
Okay, how many of them?
You have that 114, there's 72, 74 hard copy, so you're really at 200, and maybe, let's say, there's 600 families?
Yeah, so about a third.
Yeah, which I think is probably a pretty good response rate for a survey of this kind. I mean, you know, usually, you know, marketing people are all love 5%, it's like...
5% is good.
For a 30%, I think we're good pretty well. And we haven't closed it yet. So, thank you for that, Brenda, very much. The next, I think, our superintendent will discuss a little bit with the capital budget process, and what we need to do in order to get these, these EDO 49 forms filed with the state for each of our projects.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Barbas. So this, this in part kind of shapes the schedule for the committee's next two meetings. But let me start at the end point, at the end in mind, and just work backwards if I could. By June of 2017, this coming June, two things need to occur in order to move a project forward and have any school in place three years from now, which would be the 21-22 school year. So, there is a board action and a council action. So by June of 2017, the board must approve the ED, a state form called the EDO 49. These are the education specifications for any new building, all right? So, if we were to build a new school in South Norwalk, if we were to build a new school on the Ponus campus, both of which are under consideration now, we would have to have an EDO 49 approved by the Board of Education in June that describes the program. The purpose of that is, during the subsequent design phase, is to have an architect design a school that meets the program. So you don't, you know, design a school and then put a program in, you have to, you have a sense of the program first, and then you build a school that will implement it. And that is a fundamental responsibility of the Board of Education in the school construction process, is to approve the EDO 49 or the EdSpecs. Now, we will have, be advised by EdSpec committees for each school prior to the submission of the program to the Board of Education. This was discussed at several of our community meetings, you know, where people have asked, well, how do I have input into the program? And it is through the EdSpecs committee. We will be asking parents, community members, teachers, administrators in each of the, of those communities to serve on the EdSpec committee and to look at various components of the program for that, for that school. So that's the Board of Education's responsibility by June of 2017. The municipality's responsibility, the city council's responsibility is to approve the funding. So, all of the process in terms of the various council committees, as well as action by the full council, has to take place by the end of June. With those two approvals in place, the EDO 49 and the municipality's approval for funding, we can go forward and get into the queue for the December 2017 Bond Commission meeting. Now, the city is eligible for 30%, approximately 30% reimbursement, I think it's about 32%, again, it varies year to year. So, that third of the total cost of the project is approvable by the Bond Commission in December. And, once that occurs, we enter the design phase. So, prior to December, we would be hiring an architect and an engineer and a construction manager, the construction team, and they would be designing the school. The design phase should be completed by June of 2018, and then it's two years of construction, the 18, 19 school year, and the 19, 20 school year to open for the 21, 22 school year. So that, that is the most expeditious schedule we could have at this point. If we miss any of those deadlines in terms of the EDO 49 or the council approval of funding, it sets us back a year, and we're, we have to revert to the following June. So, with that in mind, this committee, working with Mr. Barbas and the officers of the board, have set two subsequent meetings to tonight's meeting. Now, those, those dates have to be determined, but it's anticipated that there would be one at the end of November, and there would be one in mid-December, and that the November meeting would deal with the remaining data from the survey plus an in-depth discussion of a potential plan for the Ponus Ridge site. And then, there would be a mid-December meeting that would deal with the Ely and Columbus sites. That would lead to the Facilities Committee making formal recommendations to the Board of Education on December 20th. The board's schedule has been adjusted by the officers to flip the business and the workshop meetings, so that the 20th could be used for a full workshop and full presentation. And then, it would be up to the Board of Education to approve those recommendations at their June business meeting, which I think is June 17th. And that, that would...
June or July?
January, I'm sorry. I would have June on my mind here for all those approvals. So, yes, it would be January 17th for full board approval. If full board approval were to occur at that time, then it is set to the council, and we would go through all of the city committee process and other financial processes. We have to have a capital budget to the city on January 1st. We will put in a placeholder at that time, which we feel represents the largest scope of what the committee may be recommending. And, so it's, it's just there as a placeholder. If it becomes a reality, then it would be dealt with as a real number relative to the projects being recommended. So that's the, that's the process. And, you know, we're, we've got two meetings of the Facilities Committee to go, full presentation and workshop discussion by the full board, and then approval by the full board or of all or part of those recommendations in, in January, January 17th of 2017.
Thank you for that. I think one thing that really is important here to focus on is this EDO 49 application requirement, that you do have to have this EdSpec committee, EdSpecifications committee. And that committee, you know, they have to develop a plan that the state will accept, and that plan will, you know, why are you building the school, what students will be going to the school, what, you know, if it's a magnet school, what's the theme of the school, how are you gonna develop it? It's very, very specific, and there are a lot of requirements, so a lot of the work, I think people thought this committee should have undertaken, would be undertaken by these EdSpec committees for each of the projects. So, just to have that clear. The next topic, we, I don't think it's quite as far, we don't have all the data to talk about this in total detail, but we definitely have made a lot of progress here. Ralph Alancizzi is gonna be, who's head of our racial balance work group, is gonna kind of look at what our student population could look like. Also, we started collecting some data that's not all been kind of processed and analyzed, but there were some handouts there at the back showing you what the student population is at the Housing Authorities projects. There are roughly 675 students, ages zero through 13, so kind of K through eight, pre-K through eight, residing in projects, you know, primarily at Rudner Court and in Colonial Village. So, in addition, we have data that was collected by the School Readiness Council, Early Childhood Council, I should call it, looking at where students in the pre-K programs, the school readiness programs, both at Ben Franklin and at Ely, where these students live. And if you look at those two sets of handouts, you can see that there are, there are a lot of students in these programs, and these are the students that are gonna be educated by these future schools that we're talking about. So, there are 58 of them at Ben Franklin, and there are over 100 of them at, at the Ely school. And you can kind of see that most of them live within a mile or less, some of them do live a little more than a mile away, and even some live over three miles away. So, that will be data we'll be incorporating as we kind of go through what the demographics of these students could look like at these schools. But now, let Ralph proceed with the detailed work he's been up to.
Yeah, so, and, good evening, everybody in the committee. So, really, what I wanted to talk to you about tonight was really only take about 10 minutes to explain what this work group is. I know that Dr. Adamowski and Mike had explained at the last meeting that there is a racial balance work group that I'm helping to chair. What I'd like to do, once again, is just explain the process of what we're going through and some of the initial findings that we've already found, and how we're gonna move forward. So, the first thing I want to explain is that this is actually just a work group, it's, it's not a committee, it's just a group of people that are gonna work together on gathering data to be able to... Ralph Downsees is going to be, who's head of our racial balance work group, is going to kind of look at what our student population could look like. Also, we started collecting some data that's not all been kind of processed and analyzed, but there were some handouts there at the back showing you what the student population is at the Housing Authorities projects. There are roughly 675 students ages zero through 13, so kind of K through eight, pre-K through eight, residing in projects, you know, primarily at Rudner Court and in Colonial Village. So in addition, we have data that was collected by the School Readiness Council, Early Childhood Council, I should call them, looking at where students in the pre-K programs, the school readiness programs, both at Ben Franklin and at Ely, where these students live. And if you look at those two sets of handouts, you can see that there are, there are a lot of students in these programs and these are the students that are going to be educated by these future schools that we're talking about. So there are 58 of them at Ben Franklin and there are over 100 of them at, at the Ely school. And you can kind of see that most of them live within a mile or less. Some of them do live a little more than a mile away. Even some live over three miles away. So that will be data we'll be incorporating as we kind of go through what the demographics of these students could look like at these schools. But now let Ralph proceed with the detailed work he's been up to.
Yeah, so, and good evening, everybody in the committee. So really what I wanted to talk to you about tonight was really only take about 10 minutes to explain what this work group is. I know that Dr. Adamowski and Mike had explained at the last meeting that there is a racial balance work group that I'm helping to chair. What I'd like to do, once again, is just explain the process of what we're going through and some of the initial findings that we've already found and how we're going to move forward. So the first thing I want to explain is that this is actually just a work group. It's, it's not a committee. It's just a, a group of people that are going to work together on gathering data to be able to hand to the committee so that they can actually then assimilate it into the rest of the process. And the goal of the, of the work group is really to help to develop simulations or from the scenarios that are developed on what, what schools we want to build and then what would the population look like as well as the racial balance and how would we meet those racial balance needs. So it's, it's in a sense creating simulations and forecasting what we need to have in place. So just so you know, some of the work group members, they're all staff here. All of them have, have worked with different types of data when it comes to actually these scenarios. Bill Hodel being one of them, obviously from the facilities side. Joanna working with transportation and understanding, you know, everything that goes into count of attendance zones. Patty, our Director of School Improvement, a number of the principals that are involved as well in a lot of the schools that have been discussed. And Jean Starkman too, as well, who is our Power School and Student Information Coordinator. So she's actually the one that kind of holds the keys to our internal data. So for this first analysis, what we're working on is we're looking at two different scenarios at the moment. And I'll explain to you a little bit about how this process works moving forward. Once again, it's not complete, but at least you'll get an idea of how we're looking at the data and how we kind of come up with these forecasts. The first, we're looking at two different, two different analyses here. First is about the development of a school that would have a 450 student capacity, either pre-K or 8 at the Columbus site and same situation at the Ely site. In order to accomplish this, there's three basic steps that you kind of follow to try and develop a forecast for this. The first is you have to decide what your boundaries are going to be for a neighborhood school. And that would allow you to have a 450 student popul, 450 student population for any one of those areas. You need to then take some time to actually review the racial balance to make sure that you can actually meet those needs and what is the current racial balance in that area. And then you also need to figure out then as a magnet school, how do you integrate and make sure that you do have racial balance through a lottery system and so forth? So you meet those needs. Those are really, in, in basic terms, the three steps that you kind of follow to make this happen. So our initial findings right now is we decided to draw a half-mile radius around the Ely-Columbus space. And if you were looking at that currently, both of those areas we found are very, very dense. Obviously, I think we all knew that, but there are a lot of students in those areas. So a half-mile radius would overpopulate any one of those schools. Pre-K through five, if we took all the students that lived in that area, we'd have potentially 786 students in a half-mile circumference around there. At pre-K, we'd 1,124. Same thing with Columbus, about 1,000 and about 1,400. One of the things that we'll do with the, the final steps of this is also look at trends in this data because in case there's transancy, we'll look back five years to make sure that these numbers are actually something that we see on a regular basis and we see any changes so that it's not a one-off deal of a certain year. Once we saw that, though, we realized that we had to kind of close up the gap, close up our space if we really want to look at this as a neighborhood school. So we decided to do an analysis at quarter-mile radius. And that gives us more reasonable numbers to really work with it. So at Ely, a good example, a pre-K through five school there would be about 290 students if you took a quarter-mile radius around it. And to say, at Columbus, it would be about 375. Pre-K through eight would be about 412 students. And a pre-K through five would be about 539 at Columbus. So those are some of our basic numbers right now. Now, okay. The next steps with this is obviously then looking at this data and trying to come up with how do you balance this out? And I just want to give you one scenario tonight of how you could do this. I'm going to take that first scenario that we talked about at Ely with 290 students. So if you look currently right now, out of those 290 students that are geographically in that area, you would find that 95.2% are a minority at the moment, if you took, if you took that as a whole. In order to meet a balanced ratio of, and I'm using the example there, of an 84% ratio, which would put us within our state guidelines where we need to be, we would potentially either raise or lower that depending on what the forecasting is asking for. But for this scenario, I just, just set it at 84%. In order to reach that, what you need to do is actually then figure out a representative balance of students that would come into that area in order to meet that ratio, to get it to that point. Which in this case, if you took 185 non-neighborhood students, so you open up, let's say, a lottery for 185 students, the way that the forecasting would work is you take your overall picture of what your, your minority population is in the, in an area. So in this case, 68%. You would forecast that 68% of those 185 students coming in would be minority. And then you'd be able to figure out to forecast that you've actually hit a non-minority number that would meet those needs. So in the case of bringing in 185 students, you would then have a total population in that building of, right now, with those, with those markings, 402 minority students, 73 non-minority students to meet the ratios that we need to meet. And so this is the kind of forecasting we do. Now, obviously, that's at 475 students, not 450. So then what you do is you manipulate, you go back and actually see where your attendance zones are again and you keep working through this. So it's not an exact science, but this is the process that you kind of go through in order to try and forecast how to be able to build, you know, this kind of building and make sure that you're racially balanced. And this is, this is the type of work that we'll be doing together. So to just kind of sum this up, so the process steps once again, and this is just a little more detailed from that first slide that I gave you, is you look at your boundaries, you fit, you look at your target school size, you look at students that are walking distance, neighborhood level demographics. Then you determine the non-neighborhood components that need to be, need to be achieved to meet that racial balance. So how many students need to be there in order to make sure that you can meet that need? You take a look at, as I mentioned before, the representative group is to be able to figure out how big your lottery needs to be to be able to bring students in. And from there, you can actually balance out your, your load for the building so that it's racially balanced. So once again, this is kind of the, the process that we'll go through with each one of the scenarios as they, as they come up. So I know we'll be doing this with the Ely-Columbus site and we'll be doing the same work with the, with the Ponus site.
Great. And you're working with Malona McBrun on this.
Yes, excuse me, yes. So Malona McBrun are guiding us and guiding the work group in this work with us. And they'll be actually meeting with us at our next meeting to kind of talk a little bit more about this process step and what things that we should be looking for.
Thanks, Mal. Okay. Any committee members, do you have any questions on the work we're up to? But I think it does become apparent that, well, we'll learn more at the next meeting, but based on this first step, that more likely the dot, it might, it could be challenging to have a neighborhood school in South Norwalk and meet those standards, right? You are going to have to draw out some kids from out of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think, well, I think you just have to figure out what, where the boundaries are, what really is the neighborhood in order to, to make that happen.
So, you know, this, as Ralph pointed out, this is a very dense area. I think everybody who has looked at this data has been impressed by that, right? We have lots of children, right? Now, right now, they're all being bused somewhere else outside of their neighborhood. The goal, obviously, to have a school there is to give at least some of those students an opportunity to walk to school. And of course, that's where this quarter-mile zone, you know, derived from. However, I, I think the point or the conclusion of the work so far is that, you know, we can achieve racial balance in one of two ways. One is by adjusting the, the attendance area lines, right? And the other is by creating some type of a intra-district magnet approach that would enable students from other parts of the city to join the school relative to the calculation that Ralph showed you on the next, to the last page. We've also done some research on how you can do that, right? Because one of the things you cannot do is to set racial quotas for a certain number of students of each race or ethnicity. However, what you can do and what is done in other parts of the state is you can have proxies for factors that would, would influence diversity. So for example, giving preference to individuals or families in income-restricted housing, giving preference to students who receive free or reduced lunch. And these are non-racial factors, but again, they're proxies that correlate with diversity. Stanford does a lot of this now. We've found several examples in, in Stanford and actually identified a consultant who has helped a number of school districts who have been out of racial balance compliance. And I want to stress that we are not at the current time, but there have been districts that have been. And we've identified a consultant that has helped those districts conform to that. So this is very interesting work. It's complex, given the density of the area and the numbers of students, but I think we feel fairly optimistic that, you know, we can make recommendations for schools in either site that would have a plan attached to them that would achieve racial balance. Okay, well, thank you for that.
Can you, our audience asked questions?
Of course, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, Ms. Robert Burgess. I had a good sign from the wall. Number one question, why are you taking on a quarter-mile radius around the Kennedy School?
The, the reason that we did right now currently for this first, for this first simulation is that at a 450, once again, if you're trying to only, if you're sticking within the parameters of 450 students in a location, the quarter-mile left us with 290 students. It was strictly from a numbers standpoint, how you can fit that many people into, into a building and then keep that balance as well.
Number one question, what kind of outreach you are doing to the 99 to respond to the survey? Because surveys lie on a computer and they anticipate you can reach out to the 99 or the 79 to respond to the survey.
Yeah, that may be a friend of the question.
Yeah, we, we actually distributed hard copy surveys as well as the electronic surveys. The information that we've presented tonight does not have the hard copy surveys incorporated in it yet. So that's what we're going to do as a next step is input the hard copies and continue to gather additional information from people and then incorporate it into the results and present it in full next time around, so.
Any response to your answer? If we don't have the surveys of the 99s, why are we rushing this? Because the state grants every year. You have to find this year, if you met you, next year. I tell you, fully response from the community exactly what is needed and the educational requirement in those schools. Anybody can build bricks and mortar if you want to know what will be in those schools and how long it will be guaranteed, top educational requirement will be there for those kids. And so I think that we just throw down this load and make sure that we get all the community together, make sure we have all the special plans to make sure it be a top, the educational program in those schools. I think that's typically what we're going to do.
So, Mr. Burgess, I think there's two answers to your question. There's the, the answer on the surveys and then there's a larger picture of timing. So we do have the hard copies. And so you'll see that portion of the pie graph that was from the unassigned families going up, right, becoming broader by the next, the next report. And, you know, as Ms. Williams said, we intend to disaggregate that so we would know how they feel, how versus the residents of South Norwalk versus the residents of the, of the city. On the overall issue of timing and whether or not we could afford to lose a year, you know, we're moving forward. This is a, this is an issue that our, our city has kicked the can down the road on for many, many years. And we are on the verge of over-enrolling. And we're trying not to lose another year to avoid over-enrolling our schools and being able to have a school for all of our children.
I'd like to say, I appreciate today is that I'm going to make sure the quality of education will be what it should be before we go forward.
Yeah, and we can relate to that. That's our primary mission as well, is to raise student achievement, close the gaps. Every time we have an opportunity to build a new school, we can build a flagship school and it should have everything in it that, you know, we are trying to apply around the district to have high-achieving students who do not have an achievement gap as a result of attending our schools. So I think we're in absolute agreement on that point, sir.
And that really leads into the next topic, which is kind of discussing curriculum and resource requirements for a new school. If you look, we have 12 elementary schools currently. Two of them are magnets, so they have special curriculum specific to that magnet school. I guess we have actually three magnet schools, although Jefferson, you know, is a science magnet as well, but they don't have students from outside the district because of their certain capacity constraints. So we have the 12 elementary, three are magnet schools, so their curriculum's a little different. The other nine schools all have the identical curriculum for language arts, science, math. And we have curriculum instruction specialists who train the teachers, who go over those materials. They have the same books, the same tests. Everything's identical in those nine schools. But I think I'd like the superintendent to discuss this further, how we see that, how we see that looking as we build these new schools.
Is that number six?
That is number six, yes it is.
Okay, so, you know, I think at this point, you know, we can say, what are the, what are the possibilities or what are things that we should be looking at relative to program in these two sites? So let's start with Ponus where I think the answer is, is, is clearer. One of the central objectives of the Strategic Operating Plan is to reduce the, the student population at Jefferson School. Jefferson is in a terrible situation now. We have 12 portable classrooms whose usable life will be over by the end of the Strategic Operating Plan. The school is at 600 and some odd students and it was designed for 400. So you've got about, you've got over 200 students in, in portable classrooms now at the Jefferson site. The goal of the Strategic Operating Plan, one of them, is to reduce the population of Jefferson to 400 students and to renovate it as new, as a new neighborhood school serving that neighborhood. And there would continue to be somewhere between 350 and 400 students in that neighborhood as indicated through our demographic studies. Now, what is overcrowding Jefferson is two factors. One, the neighborhood, the South Norwalk neighborhood around the Columbus School, south of I-95, has been districted over time or historically for some years to Jefferson Schools. And there are about 125, 126 students in that area. Those are the students who could walk to school if there was a neighborhood school on the Columbus site. And that would also have the beneficial effect of reducing the number of students at Jefferson. The other factor at Jefferson has been its status as a science magnet. Now, in 2017, you wouldn't have a science magnet, you'd have a STEM magnet, right? As programs have developed significantly over the last 20 years. But because Jefferson was a science magnet, some of its over-enrollment is attributable to that. And again, it's in the area of about 125 students who are attending Jefferson from outside of the attendance area. And that's really how you get from the 400 to, to over 600. It's the area around Columbus and it's the magnet students. Now, we have frozen enrollment in the magnet program at Jefferson. So that number is starting to go down a little bit because we graduated fifth graders out and there have been no new students coming in kindergarten or the other grades into the magnet program. So if you take all those factors into consideration, the, the logical step at Ponus would be to create a STEM magnet school, a real STEM magnet school. And, you know, the EdSpecs would involve unpacking what are the elements of STEM for an elementary school. An elementary- unpacking, what are the elements of STEM for an elementary school, an elementary engineering program, a Lego's lab, what form does science instruction take in terms of experiential learning, how do we integrate math and technology in the STEM approach and so on. And the fact that we could do this on our largest campus of 65 acres available would enable a K-8 campus. And so work will have to be done to PONUS also, because PONUS is in good shape, it's not in great shape. And programmatically, it would need to increase its capacity in the STEM area as, as well. And we would, we would organize this as a K-8 STEM campus. It would be a magnet campus. I think we would need to give, in a citywide lottery, the, the purpose of a citywide lottery would be to reduce elementary pressure, right, in, in all elementary schools, but particularly Jefferson, and to reduce pressure on the middle schools as, as well. And so, you know, our, our, our purpose and, and there would be to give some kind of preference to the Jefferson families, some of whom are there for the, the, the science program, and some of whom are simply very proud of it and want their students to be involved in it. So we would have some combination of Jefferson preference and citywide enrollment. So that would be something that certainly should be looked at relative to the, to the PONUS site and developed through the EdSpec Committee if the committee recommends that direction and the board approves it. The, the situation in South Norwalk is a little more complicated because we have an existing school in play with the Columbus School. Now, this school already has a magnet program, and this school is already racially balanced. And so its placement, either on the Ely site or on its current site after renovation as, as new, in that scenario, we have the program already determined, and the racial balance guidelines are already set. It's really the neighborhood school, whether it would exist on the Ely site or the Columbus site, that is going to require thoughtfulness in terms of program, as well as racial balance. And it remains to be seen, I think we'll have a better handle on this from the, the committee's work that Mr. Valenzese just described to you, as to whether or not we can do this through the adjustment of district, of attendance area lines, or we need to develop a intra, intra-district magnet program. If the school on the, the Ely site were to be a K-5 neighborhood school, I think it would be compelling for us to look at the relationship with the Odyssey preschools. Now, the Odyssey program, when it was organized, has two very strong partners. And one of them is the Maritime Aquarium. And so if you were to visit Odyssey today or talk to the parents who have their children involved, I think one of the points of rated satisfaction is the fact that there is an environmental science component of this. One of the teachers from the Maritime Center has actually assigned there full-time. They have exhibits up, they have live animals, and, you know, it's, it's, it's very integrated. And again, a wonderful aspect of that program. One of the things, and I've, I've talked with the director and the partners about this, one of the things we would need to look at is, could we have a continuation of that program through grade five, where it begins in preschool, but it goes up to grade five utilizing the existing partners. And so I think it would be that idea, which is an obvious one, given, given what's, what's there, against other ideas that we would, we would have to, to look at and consider. So those are some of the opportunities, I think, that would be available to us. And again, I want to emphasize that, you know, in this arena, everything's connected to everything else. And so the situation in South Norwalk is very connected to Jefferson, and Jefferson is very connected to our situation in South Norwalk. And the best use of public funds will involve us doing things where we can address a, several problems or several issues simultaneously, and not just one, or not do it in isolation.
If any family in Ely is a K-5, is that sort of a neighborhood school with them? What middle school would they want?
If that were a K-5, Miss Young, and again, we, we don't know that.
Please, no.
I'm sorry, Ms. Young. I'm just, I'm looking at you from a distance here without my glasses. I apologize. No questions. Thank you. The, if it were a elementary school, very clearly those students should go to Rotten. And if you look at the proximity on a map to Rotten, you'd be shocked, just like looking at it visually, how close that site is to Rotten Middle School. And it's, it's also very close, quite close to Bryan McMahon High School. So that would be a nice feeder pattern in terms of Rotten. Now, Rotten, there's two things about Rotten. We, while we are, while we are experiencing an enrollment crunch at three of the four middle schools, we have a little bit of space at, at Rotten. So you could enroll, you know, when you look at, at a K-5 school, three sections, you know, you basically have about 70 students coming out of that fifth grade each year. Rotten could easily accommodate another 70 students. Rotten would actually benefit from that because the economy of scale would be helpful to the school, and it would also improve the racial balance at Rotten within, within our, our guidelines. So I, I would say that that, that would be fairly logical and obvious.
And so you mentioned earlier, Mr. Burgess talked about that half mile, quarter mile radius. So when you talk about elementary schools, does that include Row Aiden as well? And has that not been part of the discussion as options for young people to attend those schools you were talking about?
That, Row Aiden's more than, like, two miles, probably two miles.
It's two miles away.
So that, that would be the furthest out. Rotten would be the closest, Bryan McMahon next, and then Row Aiden.
What about Brookside?
Not within the quarter mile, no.
They're, and they're packed. I mean, they're, that school's full.
And, and Brookside is, is full.
Joe, just for Dr. Valzki, when was this STEM magnet program ever discussed for PONUS with the staff?
Well, it's not been because we don't have any direction in this area yet. Okay, that would occur during the EdSpecs process.
But it seems that's the direction you would like to go in.
I, I think that's a logical alternative, given the needs of Jefferson.
Okay.
Okay, so, so I guess it flows in this direction. Given the needs of Jefferson, a STEM magnet is a logical alternative, or is, is a logical way to approach this. We're going to build it on the PONUS site. I don't think it behooves us to build it in isolation. I think, I think it behooves us to provide STEM opportunities to the students of PONUS at the same time. And I can't imagine, I can't imagine the staff at PONUS ever being against that.
Well, I'm, I'm sure representing some of them, we'd like to know more information before we would agree to anything. But, because it's about the children, not what's best for us. But you talked about having three sections. We currently have nine at PONUS in the sixth grade. So what, how would that then work? What would the transition then look like if we're eliminating sections? Because I have, personally, I have six sections, three of science that are all 28, 26 larger, excuse me, and three of social sciences.
I think the number of sections would have to flow from the number of students that had to be served. And it very well may be, in a situation like this, as there, as occurs in magnet schools all over our state, that there would be several points of enrollment. In other words, you might have a lottery of pre-K, you might have another one at grade six, you know, there may be something in between. But we would have to size the sections to the number of students that would be served.
And moving forward, we would look to, if this plan did go through, having teachers teach one subject?
I don't, I don't know, Joe. And I know you're trying to angle this into that, that issue, but I have no information on that.
I'm not at all. I'm not at all.
Okay, I have no information on that.
I just appreciate that, trying to do that.
I have no information on that.
Is with a science magnet, I would assume that we would look to hire people who are specifically trained in that and not take current staff and place them in positions where they might not feel comfortable.
I think that, Joe, that's way jumping the gun at this point, because we've talked about it in all our meetings. Right now, we've got, we've got to find states for 900 kids. And it's a bricks and mortar decision. And the curriculum and the organization will in large part be determined at the time of the EdSpecs Committee, because when you file these EDO 49s, the state does expect you to have a framework and a mission statement. I mean, it's pretty detailed, but they expect you to submit. So all that work would take place over that time period when that's being submitted. Hold on one second. I think, Mr. Roseby and then the young lady afterwards.
Yes. My name is John Bozmi, and I was at the Ely, at the last meeting, and I spoke to the community. And I was telling the community, I've been here a long time, and I know the schools are some better than anyone. And I'm gonna make some predictions tonight. I made prediction before. What the plan you guys hear is not gonna work. I'm gonna tell you why it's not gonna work. If you, these two schools at Ely is not gonna take care of all these children and they three of which coming in here. If you look in Norwalk, and everybody not looking, and we should be on these committee, and if you listen to us, you won't hear the plan. But I told all the superintendents that we were kept fixing them schools. We had 31 schools here. What you developing, all this developing coming here, gentlemen, you can't fool yourself. You got a lot of homes, I mean, like one family, one to two and three, a lot of kids coming in here. Down inside, you know, you got a lot of buildings up now. You got over in northern now, 240 units now coming up there now. Up at, up at Ulaanbaatar, you got 700 units coming up. You gonna have some place for these kids. You don't want to listen to no one. You, in, 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 in three years, there'll be so many people down there, and I don't want to get the black community. I'm not against that, because I'm for all the kids. We got Spanish now. We ain't gonna have no one. Them schools ain't gonna be for them, because you got to replace these kids coming into South Norwalk. Gentlemen, what you need to be doing is finding some more schools. We should be looking in, you should be looking for three or four more schools. PONUS raised them, you should leave them like here, because you gonna have more kids that want to PONUS raise now. I'm warning you. You got to use some sense. And I'm telling y'all, our shield in those schools, Ben McRanks, and all them schools were schools. We had the old Washington School up there, they made house. Deep Broad River, we had a school. You made them all in private. Gentlemen, I'm telling you right now, if you don't listen to us, this plan is not gonna work. And I would love, we asked to be on these committee. Y'all don't want us on these committees. We can help you break it through. Now, I'm gonna say the last thing. I'm, I'm not trying to be bad. If you look at Columbus, and I'm gonna say the further, what I'm gonna, I'm gonna do. At Columbus, when they made that magnet school, and I, and I, and see, I come to all my meetings, I look at the data. When they made that magnet school, they told them minority, said, we're gonna tear up a church school. What they did with the school, and you go back and look at the data last year, I got the data. When they put them in there, they put in 450 black kids, they put in about 70 some, a, a Hispanic kid, and they brought 170 some whites kids. So how do you call that? I mean, this is what's going on, gentlemen. If you look at Row Aiden, and we cannot keep on ducking Row Aiden. You got about 48 black kids down there. I looked at the data, see, I'm a data man. You had, you got about 60 or 70 Hispanic, and you got almost 300 whites. Gentlemen, you tell me race of balance, we got to be fair. And you get mad with me all you want. It's not gonna work. If you want to, if you wanna look at one or two scooter race out, you got to do it at all of them. If you look at Boston, you got to do it at all. So what you got to do is look for more schools and stop this nonsense, and stop this game pack, and stop this patch of the school up with them. If you listen to me, you wouldn't have done it, because you gonna have more than any 19 schools here. You gonna have maybe 20 some, wait, they coming, you gonna need 20, 4, 6 or 7 more schools. I ain't hearing nothing on the boat about that. And in three years, that's when all these projects gonna be coming in. You gonna have so many kids down in South Norwalk. They ain't gonna get to Ely. You will put all the people in Ely. And we gonna go right back to that, what you call, you know, like, we have, like, go back to the discrimination that we hit, but Ely was all. And I'm telling you the truth, I know what I'm talking about. Because in the early, the blacks are down to 1900, they gonna, wait, they going down, they gonna be down to 1200. We, it won't be no minority school down there. So let's us look at that. Now, I would like you on that committee and go down, sit down and look at the data. You, you are, you are not telling the public the data.
Mr. Roseby, can I just give you a couple of numbers? So this is according to the state of Connecticut. In the school year 2014-15, or sorry, 2015-16, Columbus Magnet School was 58% minority, 58% minority.
Are you kidding? You who the?
I'm looking at the state data.
I don't care what the data, that, that data was, I got the figure of them.
This is from the state of Connecticut?
I'm gonna show it to you.
Okay, I'll, I'll pick this up for you.
I'm telling you, the data, I mean, you, you, you know, sometimes y'all really can give to the data. I'm looking at what I got on, I got the document. I look at it. I count. I got good sense.
Okay, well, I'll show this, Joe.
And one more thing, what I want you to do, I noticed what you changed. And I've been watching, I come to all my meetings, everybody know, and the community love me, because they know I know what, that's why you don't want me, they own no committee, because they know I'm smart. The bottom line is, what you doing in these schools, you, you gentlemen, are not, on the data, what you send to Harvard, don't compare that. I look at every data. I went up and, here what you doing now, what you doing with the data. And I looked at the old data, they have on there, here's the black kid, here's the Hispanic kid, here's the white kid, and here's the Asian kid now. What you did now, you, the Spanish don't have, and I got the data. And when I speak, I don't care what, what you send to the state might be is misleading. I got the data. What you doing with now, they put on there, white and Hispanic kid. What do that mean? White and Hispanic kid. You gotta stay, say, and I'm gonna bring it short to nothing. When I come to the data, I'm gonna give it to you. I got the facts, I got the data. Why you put white and Hispanics together?
Now, they're different under federal government.
I don't care.
This is the federal government. Listen to the guy.
What the federal government did, you got to challenge the federal government. The technical, you got the, you can sue the federal government. Look what happened with the state this through, that jury did. What I'm saying, let's look at the data. And I would like to, for say this, I'm gonna be quiet a little bit. I would like to see from you doing it and set up a committee down there, who we can set on as a committee to set on here and go with this gentleman over what's going on. And if you don't give it to us, we gonna demand it. We know what we talking about, Mr. Mr. Val.
Thank you, Ms. Roseby.
Thank you very much.
Young lady?
Is a STEM decided, or is there still possibility of STEAM?
It's a really good question. So this gets into a general budget question. We have, we have three so-called magnet, intra-district magnet programs currently. The Science Magnet at Jefferson, the New Language at Silvermine, and the Bank Street Program at Columbus. Now, you'll notice in our Strategic Operating Plan, there is a whole goal that is designed around making the choices that we offer more robust and also creating additional choices. So there has been criticism of some of our intra-district magnet programs is, you know, that they're, they're not robust, there's not very much to them, right? And so, you know, we've had these programs, but the schools, you know, basically struggle to provide a basic program, because they get the same amount of money as, as everybody else, as schools that are not magnet schools. Now, there is a broad recognition in our state that if you're going to have an intra-district magnet program, you have to provide some program funding in order to do the things that are essential to that program experience. So to give you an example, throughout our state, the state magnets, the inter-district magnets, the state provides a state grant of 3,000 per student additional to those schools to cover their program costs. So the Board of Education and I have, have discussed this. Beginning in this budget, I'm going to be recommending to the board some kind of a per-student program allocation for students in our magnet schools. And so that's how we would, we would finance the, the program. Now, you know, STEAM is more expensive than STEM. And so this comes down to a financial decision. Could you raise enough money and support the school enough to offer a full-fledged STEM program? Could you Could you raise enough money and support the school enough to, for STEAM? STEAM has enhanced arts, as well as enhanced, um, science, technology, engineering, and, and math. So, I think this is going to be a financial issue for the district. And again, I, I've had no reaction yet to this proposal from the Board, because I haven't made it, and I'm gonna be making it in this budget, but I think last year was a learning experience for us. We can't, uh, keep saying that our Magnets are not robust, but provide them with no program support, because then they will be, you know, just like everyone else, because they're spending their money like everyone else, who's just trying to keep a basic program intact.
And is there still a possibility of the STEM Program being at the South, New South Norwalk School, rather than Ponus, as it was an option on the survey itself?
Yeah, if we, if we were to have the Maritime Aquarium as a partner, I think it would be more along the lines of environmental science. But yes, I mean, that, that is a form of, of STEM. So, so the answer to your question is basically yes. You know, we've had, we've also had this discussion, um, with grassroots tennis regarding their involvement in the school. And we've gone as far as to consult with our architect around, you know, could a facility be built that would serve the purposes of both a gym and an indoor tennis court, right? Which is, which would be very attractive to grassroots. And could we work with them in a way that, a special feature of that school, for any child that attended it, is that they would have tennis lessons and play on a tennis team, just by virtue of this special, uh, school that, that they were to attend. So, these kinds of partnerships are, are important, and because they, they define the program of the school. You know, and this is, this is really what the EdSpecs Committee is charged with doing, is making this as special as possible, utilizing the assets that we have, and the partnerships that we have, and then utilizing, to the greatest extent possible, the financial support that the Board of Education and the city, um, might provide.
Rosa?
Yes, um, for the community, so the train doesn't leave the station, um, we're not here asking after the fact. Do you have any idea of the, um, work groups? How many, and the timeframe they're gonna be put into place? Just a general broad, broad stroke on that.
Well, I think as the superintendent went through, that it's all, this form that we need to submit to the state by June 30th, would require an Ed specifications Committee for each school project. So, um, once the Board approves how we're gonna go, what projects we're gonna proceed with, an EdSpec Committee would be appointed by the superintendent, that's how the state law is written. And on that committee would be, you know, as he talked about, there'd be a cross-section of representatives, community members, school members, academics. And we've had some informal discussion that obviously, uh, the community slash parental representation would be representative of the community that the school would be in.
Correct.
So, that would, you know...
And we've had that before with renovations, we've done none of those things in the district.
It's required by state, I mean, that's how state law works.
Um, right now, and I'm thinking, is it Dr. Dabrowski, is it, are we looking at Ponus? We're looking at Ely, we're looking at Jefferson? What other schools are we looking at, or?
I think the focus of this committee for Phase 1 has been the schools you've just mentioned.
Okay.
Now, if you look at our strategic, of our facilities, tenure facilities plan, um, there, you know, there is virtually every school that needs work, right? Um, and needs something. But the, um, big objectives, the immediate objectives, that would prevent something very bad from happening, uh, is to add the capacity of three new schools, um, over the next several years, and to renovate as new the three schools in the worst condition. So, that's really the priority of the, of the, of the plan. And I think the committee has, and the Board in general, has looked at this in phases, right? Um, you know, for what's Phase 1, Phase 1 is the most pressing issues. Uh, we need to get the, a capacity of about 900 more students, uh, online, um, to accommodate our students and prevent over enrollment. And then, we need to, um, uh, you know, be able to renovate as new at least one of the three. Now, in this plan, um, you know, Jefferson is one of the three, right? So, Jefferson would be a renovation as new, Columbus would be a renovation as new. And then, you would add two schools, one on the Ponus side, and one in South Norwalk. So, I think we see that as the most pressing work, the Phase 1 work, the things that really have to be addressed within, you know, this, this long three-year period, um, to avoid, you know, uh, things happening that would not be good for our students.
Thank you for that. One of the things that we keep finding happening is that we look up and we find that things are already in place. Like tonight, we heard that there's a racial balance work group, which is made, I saw the list of names, Ralph, which were all staff.
Yeah.
Uh, and maybe that was designed to be that, you didn't, you didn't include any other people from the community, or any, maybe that's how, that's the time, because of the data.
It's just, all it is is a data work group to try and gather the data, it's not, it's not a committee.
Right, exactly. But what happens is, is that just moving forward, so that will not occur with these others, is what I'm trying to prevent. So, if we even had some idea, is there a place that we can, you know, website, how do we know when this is actually going to occur? So, we know, as a community, parental, doesn't matter, a community person wants to be involved in the work, study group. How would they know to put their name in? How would they know how they would be included?
So, um, you know, I think as Mr. Barbas pointed out, the bricks and mortar decision in terms of accommodating enrollment, that is the purview of the Facilities Committee. Ultimately, it is the decision of the full Board, once it receives these, these recommendations. However, once a decision is made that we're going to have a school in a particular, uh, place, then we revert to the work of the EdSpecs Committee. Now, we will solicit for that, uh, among the parent community, the general community, people can volunteer, we'll try to develop a group that's representative. But again, this is a, um, this is a working group, and so, you know, you, you have to, for example, in the STEM arena, you have to be able to unpack the STEM program, and say, okay, given these requirements or these experiences, how are we going to build that into the program of the school? And then, what implications does that have for how the building is designed? But it's really at that stage, Ms. Burry, that, you know, um, we would, we would ask for community and parent, uh, representatives.
And the EdSpec Committee, if you've heard the timeline, so, uh, the Board will have a workshop, um, on December 20th, and then, the Board needs to vote by January 17th, or is gonna vote at that meeting on January 17th, is the current plan. Once that vote takes place, then those EdSpec Committees for each of those projects gets formed. And I don't, I was looking for, but I, I know Tom Hamilton gave me the, the whole kind of prep for an EdSpec Committee, what comes from the state, and I'll, we'll find it and post it, you know, with all the other facility stuff on that one page of the Norwalk Schools website, so people can see what this EdSpec, I mean, some of it's kind of, is pretty technical, uh, but this is what the state requires, and because the state's funding 30, 32% of the project, we're obviously gonna follow their mandates, and how they, how they tell you, you need to structure this. You know, we're not gonna, we're, we're not in a position, we can't reinvent the wheel, because these gentlemen who are here are not gonna let us give up 32% of the funding from the state of Connecticut.
So, just, just to give you an example, let's, let's say that, um, we were to have a neighborhood, um, maybe it would be a neighborhood school, maybe it would be a Magnet School. Let's say we were to have a K5 school on the, um, Ely site. The fact that we have grassroots tennis there, I think during the EdSpecs process, it would behoove us to make a decision on, um, an indoor tennis court as opposed to a gym, or a facility that could be used for, for both. And then, um, uh, part of that would also involve where to place the tennis courts, uh, at least the, the new ones. And so, you know, at the EdSpec level, you have to answer the question of, you know, what are the students going to do, what's gonna be their program, what's gonna be their special opportunities? And then, how do you design the site in the building in order to, to provide them?
Jalen, you held your hand up a while ago?
No, and this might last, is that, that's why we heard about surveys that came in, there were surveys, there were questions, there were meetings that you see happening. And the reason being is that when you feel you're left out, and your voice is not being heard, that's when you see these things start to happen. So, I'm trying to just get a better handle on, so the community has an idea on how they can be involved without trying to play catch-up, and trying to always be left out, feeling they're left out. And so, that's why I'm asking the question, is to give you some idea of why I'm even getting into these work groups, because, as I said, it seems to be that we're always trying to kind of run and say, hey, we're here, we need to listen, you need to hear our voice, and that's what we're trying to do.
Rosa, and I'm happy to forward you this email correspondence. I started reaching out to the two Common Council members who represent South Norwalk on July 21st.
I did see that, I did see that.
Multiple emails, and never got any responses, so it has not been for lack of trial.
No, and, but that's just the common, these, those two members, I'm just saying, something, something, like you said, on the website, something that we all have access to, is what I'm looking for.
And, and Ms. Burry, I could just also point out too, we have added to the main page of the website, a direct link, um, to the facilities master planning information. Um, so you'll see it on the left side of the website, we'll continue putting information up there, whether it's video from the meeting tonight, whether it's minutes, documents that we pass out, so that it's all in one place, that people can find it easily. Um, the other thing is, um, is one of the points of the survey that we did, we did ask people if they were, it was an optional question, if they wanted to give us their email address, so that we could continue to keep them up to date on additional information. And that's another piece of contact that we'll have, that we'll be able to send out people information moving forward, who have expressed interest in the topics that we're talking about here tonight, so.
And that's appreciated, Brenda, and the fact is that we had to reach out to make sure that something, our voice was heard somewhere. And so, it is appreciated, but that's what I'm trying to prevent, that we keep having to kind of say, hey, guys, you are here, we should be part of the conversation. So, that's why I'm asking that ahead of time.
And Rosa, as you know, when we were reviewing the strategic operating plan, this is part of the strategic operating plan, three of the five meetings were in South Norwalk. So, it's not like we've been trying to hide anything, and it's been part of the process. Um, the last, oh, sorry, Mr. S, if you had a question?
Hi, this is Jalen C., and I'm from District K. Um, I think a lot of people, we have Mr. Mosby, and Mr. Burgess, and a lot of people, not just in South Norwalk, but also, um, in District K, um, the urban core of Norwalk, we just wanna feel like we're a part of it. We really care about the kids, we know it's a brick and mortar decision, however, these are our kids that we talking about. I have a niece that's gonna come into the school system next year. Um, and we know, I'd rather have my niece be in a leaky basement, uh, with a quality education, than to be in a new school where she's gonna fall through the cracks, and you still gonna have achievement gaps and everything. Uh, with us, um, it's been brought up at the, um, I think every meeting that I've been at, people want to be part of the committee, and we know that you said that's gonna be down the road, but we wanna be, wanna feel like we're part of the process right now. Um, and I feel like that's a fair request, uh, not after you make a decision where a school is gonna be built, but actually now, because this is another big decision. So, we just wanna feel like a committee should be formed now, um, because it's, it's a big decision, and it's our kids, and we know that it's not just a black community, but we have Spanish, and, and we just wanna have something, a diverse, um, committee that could work, and we have people that wanna work. You have Mr. Mosby that'll work hard, he's one of the hardest working men in Norwalk, um, and he a volunteer, and I'm pretty sure I heard he's a volunteer, we just want that. And we know, I heard what you said, but that, that's our request.
Just one little thing, just one little thing, Mr. Bob, that I'm gonna be too.
One little thing.
That's right.
I don't want him here all day.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be personal, sir, but this is serious, I take things serious, sir. Mr. Castle-Rose asked y'all at the last meeting, see, the fellow law supersedes the state law, and he's right. The state law, and I do, 'cause I used to sit on, the state law, if they have a law, the fellow law supersedes it. And according to what I understand, the, the, the state might have a law, but partnership, but the fellow law supersedes that, long as you getting the money from, from Washington. So, you all don't know those laws. That's what Mr. Castle-Rose was telling y'all, no one never challenges, you just can't go and get outside, do some partnership them, and leave the community them out. The laws say you must have, if you do do it, you must have equal represent on them board with, with the, with the community. So, I'm letting you know, he asked y'all that question, he told you all that y'all was invalid, but y'all ignored him, and you didn't let him, you remember Mr. Castle-Rose, he should be on the board. At the last vote meeting, you shut him up, not gonna be personal, you shut him up, Mr. Bobby, when he asked you, you said, "Three minutes, you gotta go." And he brought this up about all these organizations, you remember? And it crushed what they had, and didn't say one word about it. So, you got to stop playing the game and get serious. This is a serious matter. Thank you very much.
Okay, so the last point on the agenda is this, this is, you know, Ponus Ridge Project. I think a lot of what we were to discuss about Ponus Ridge has come up in the questions and in the discussions of other topics. Um, you know, we do want to, um, you know, we do have, think that, uh, kind of a stammer steam magnet there would make a lot of sense. But once again, this is something that will be further developed by the EdSpec Committee. I think we will, um, at one of the subsequent facilities meetings, we will talk a little more about Ponus in terms of where the school district, where that, where those students would come from, um, and how that would work as a, um, what do you call it, as a swing space while we're rebuilding Jefferson School, um, and how Jefferson could be addressed. Uh, another topic, obviously, we need to address at a subsequent meeting, will be the, the rest of the survey, the demographics. Uh, we have commissioned, they were part of the original study, the Loan and McBroom, I know there's been a lot of discussion and questions from members of the public about the demographic numbers, um, and, um, I even had a Common Council member ask me, who, who's doing this work, who are they, what have they done? Um, and I did get kind of their, their professional background, experience, they've worked for districts all over the state, um, and I think are very knowledgeable, this guy Mike Zubba is terrific, I think I've asked him to come to the next facilities meeting to discuss kind of where we are now, what our student population growth looks like going forward, what, what our current breakdown of our population is. So, that next meeting will be on November 29th. It'll be an evening meeting, I don't know if we've set a time yet, but November 29th will be the next meeting, and then, um, you know, we'll have a meeting probably two weeks hence, in, in December, uh, for more discussions of all these different topics we've had tonight.
So, Ms. Burry, I could just add a little bit on the Ponus Ridge Project. So, there is a policy decision here for the Board of Education, and it's one that is a decision that they, they must make. And that is whether or not to follow the recommendation in the facilities master plan to return Jefferson, to renovate Jefferson as new as a neighborhood school of 400, and get rid of the, um, 12 portables over the next 10-year period. So, that's a Board policy decision. If that decision is made, then the next policy decision is, are we gonna have a STEM Magnet? Because then, we're not having it at Jefferson, because Jefferson is now returned as a renovated as new neighborhood school. So, if we're going to have a STEM Magnet, which is the next policy decision, then the logical thing would be to build it on the Ponus site, which is the land we have available in that, in, in that area. So, it's really two policy decisions of the Board of Education that can kind of give rise to, you know, an opportunity, um, to take advantage of, um, creating a new school that will provide additional seats, but also replicating, uh, a program that the district already has. But a STEM, obviously, it would be better and, and broader.
Okay. Joe?
Um, let him speak, and then I'll speak after.
It would make the life easier if you made Ely a Magnet School, and leave Columbus a Magnet School, and then give you a look, make you a sense for your life, because there's people have what can be there. Let Ely Magnet, and keep Columbus as a Magnet, as one alternative that you can make an honest decision. Question?
We can, I mean, it's, yeah, as you heard us discuss tonight, that's very much a possibility. Um, and you, you could still have it be, you know, like if you look at, Dr. Dabrowski was talking about Stanford, if you look at Rogers Magnet there, they have a mix, that's actually an inter-district, so it's not just kids from Stanford, there are 200 kids from Norwalk that go there, and plus kids from other towns, that they have, their lottery is such that children who live in that neighborhood get first rights, and, you know, there's a, it's a mix, it's a whole formula. And these are the things we're, we're looking at right now. We just, you know, we don't have any answers, but we're, you know, we don't have anything like that today, but we're working on it.
I just wanna go back to the survey, and something said earlier, Brenda, um, the surveys, have the people in the area, the people who live there, who's in the solar area, who, who's gonna be affected by all of this? Have, have the survey been given to them, or sent to them, or... who, who's gonna be affected by all of this, have, have the survey been given to them, or sent to them, or do they know, or, or is it just within the school system and that's it? Because you got a lot of homeowners, or people renting, or whatever that's in the area. And when we start doing all this construction stuff and everything, and then we have to redo the bus, you know, the bus area and all that, it might affect some people, because the traffic flow and all that stuff. I mean, have, have the survey been, you know, extended that far, or we don't know?
Well, we do have, we do have some community members who do not have children in the system that have responded. We have passed out the hard copies through both the, to Miss Davis, has some as well, and we've asked if she's got any to return them, through Anisha Gibson down at the Odyssey Preschool. So we have reached out to that area of the community, not just to parents. We have done a lot of outreach through parents, because we're interested to hearing what they have to say about the, the school system. But we're also focusing on getting input from parents of kids who are going to be in the system for some time. So we've got another emphasis on the pre-K stuff as well. So we absolutely are welcome and open to getting information from the community as well. And if you have, I've got actually some hard copies here as well, that if anybody wants to, to help pass them out, we can certainly do that.
So, all the kids go to different schools? Weren't surveys sent to all the kids in all the schools to put surveys in their backpacks and bring them back? So every student had one, received one, we hope?
We've reached out to every single parent that we have in our system, as well as some of our pre-K parents as well. So we've done the direct route, it's online, it's been talked about in the media. We had hard copies with us there that night when we presented on the 26th. We've delivered hard copies to Ben Franklin, in addition to, in addition to the Odyssey program, so.
Okay, well, thank you everyone for attending, we will see you on November 29th.
When is the, when is the board going to meet up soon?
The board will have a workshop on December 20th, and there'll be an official board vote on January 17th.